Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, representing the 6th District and Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We are here this afternoon for the following bills. Twenty-one dash zero zero twelve, twenty-one dash zero zero four two R, twenty-one dash zero zero five five, twenty-one dash zero zero six three, twenty-one dash zero zero six four, and twenty-one dash zero zero six five. Out of just a reference for the committee, out of all of those bills, just one will have an amendment, and that's twenty-one dash zero zero four two R. So in attendance today...
Sixty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty-one dash zero zero fifty-five will have the amendment. Taking attendance for the committee first, and we have Committee Member Councilman John Bullock of the 9th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have Committee Member Councilman Mark Conway of the 4th District. And going down the list to committee members, and I guess the rest will jump on. And I do see some of the sponsors of the bills. Councilman Zee Cohen of the 1st District is here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I see Councilman Eric Costello of the 11th District is also here. Members of the Office of the President, we have Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Matt Stugman. And I'm looking to see is Lucy... Yes, Lucy Font is here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representing the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Thimulus. And I do see Councilmember Antonio Glover, member of the committee and representing the 13th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Before we begin...
I'm here too. I'm here too. Sorry to be late.
That's okay. And also, member of the committee, Councilwoman Ramos of the 14th District. And I now also see Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District, member of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we begin, before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you are not speaking, to please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized by the Chair. When recognized, please identify yourself and the agency or organization that you represent. Once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. And so let's begin, and we'll start with Bill Number twenty-one dash zero zero twelve, rezoning twelve fourteen to twelve twenty Hall Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as twelve fourteen to twelve twenty Hall Street, Block one nine eight eight B, Lot zero one nine, from the R eight zoning district to the O R one zoning district. This bill was introduced on January eleventh, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilman Costello of the 11th District. And I also want to recognize another member of the committee, Councilman Robert Stokes, representing the 12th District. Do members have any questions at this time? Hearing none, the committee will now hear from agency representatives, and we'll start with the Planning Commission.
Oh, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, sponsor. Councilman Costello, please.
Thank you for calling me sponsor. That's the nicest thing anyone called me today. I appreciate it. Madam Chair, very briefly, this is a simple rezoning from the R eight zoning district to O R one. This is to address a non-conforming use, which the long-term-time property owner, a local engineering firm, became aware of in 2019, and they have the full support of the Locust Point Civic Association, which is the community association of record in Locust Point, and I respectfully request my colleagues' support for this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Costello. Now we'll hear from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee, Martin French for the Baltimore City Planning Department. At its regular meeting of March eleventh of this year, the Planning Commission considered City Council Bill twenty-one zero zero one two on the purpose of changing the zoning of this property from R eight to O R one. Planning Commission reviewed a staff report, which recommended disapproval. The Planning Commission heard testimony, which recommended approval. And following that meeting, Planning Commission adopted this resolution. But the Planning Commission does not concur with the recommendation of its departmental staff, and instead adopts these findings with consideration for testimony and facts presented in the meeting. But a mistake was made in 2017 in continuing to place the subject properties in the R eight residential zone, as they were in fact totally occupied by non-residential uses and had been so used and occupied since the 1980s. That zoning the properties R eight made them non-conforming uses, which was in opposition to one of the goals of the Transformed Baltimore Comprehensive rezoning process, which was to minimize creation of non-conforming uses, and that the proposed zoning of Office Residential, or O R one, would have been and is a more appropriate zoning district for the subject properties and is most compatible with current use of the properties, and therefore that the Planning Commission recommends that City Council Bill Number twenty-one dash zero zero one two be passed by the City Council. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the Commission, and thank you for explaining why the Planning Commission approved the bill. The Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals, is someone here?
Hi, Madam Chair. Sorry. Nina Thimulus with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, representative from the BMZA, was not able to attend today, but they stand by the report and defer to the recommendation and report of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nina. Liam, are you there?
Sorry, I needed to be unmuted, so I am here, turning on my video. So Department of Transportation stands by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Liam. The City Solicitor's Office, Victor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Vic Turbola from the City Law Department. This was an interesting report because the Planning Commission, the Planning Department didn't have enough facts to support the rezoning. The Planning Commission's memo didn't have enough facts. My understanding is that Al Berry is presenting facts at some point in this hearing, and so when we have those facts, and assuming you agree with the facts that Mr. Berry is presenting, you will have enough to lawfully rezone the property.
Thank you. We're going to, we are going to have, Al Berry does have a testimony. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cayman Bodden, Mayor Fellow for Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report and have no objections to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. And the Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Kate Howard with the Baltimore Development Corporation, and we stand by our report and we support City Council Bill Number twenty-one dash zero zero twelve.
Okay. Do we have Al Berry here at this time? We're going to have Al present, presenting the owner can now testify and provide more information about the rezoning requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, members of the council. I submitted a letter of support with some background information. I know you have a long agenda today, so I won't necessarily belabor it and repeat it word for word, but this was to correct the mistake of the Transformed Baltimore zoning code, as was mentioned by the Planning Commission, and it had to do, has to do with a prominent engineering firm. It's been in Locust Point for over thirty-five years in an old primarily Union Hall, so it was built as an office. And they expanded into a row building soon after 1986, but which was formerly a grocery store. So both were non-conforming uses. In our opinion, this should have been recognized by the staff when the Transformed Baltimore zoning code was being discussed, but it wasn't, and the owners weren't aware of it. But they became aware of it when they began to look into some financing of their property, refinancing of their property, and the non-conforming status was potentially a problem for them. We worked extensively with the Locust Point Association up until the pandemic. We took a bit of a break and then re-engaged. We had several agreements with the Locust Point Civic Association, and we had their support, which we're glad to receive. The Law Department's report to you mentions that the findings of fact be presented to the committee. I took the liberty of drafting findings of fact in accordance with state and local requirements. I can, I don't know if the committee members have those. I can go through them and summarize them, but they deal with facts relating to population changes, public facility availability, present and future transportation, including the addition of the circulator now serving the neighborhood, compatibility with existing and future development. You're required to look at the city agency recommendations, which have recommended either favorable or no objection, consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, existing uses in the area, the zoning classification, suitability of the buildings for the use, development trends, and then the mistake. All of that is before the committee for your consideration. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any, but I know you have a busy schedule.
Could you just speak more of the mistake of the finding?
Yes, one of the principles of Transformed Baltimore that many of the council members involved with that will remember was that planning really believed that they should minimize the non-conforming regulations as it applied to certain properties. So I'm not saying they were perfect with that respect. There are non-conforming buildings in Baltimore, but this was an obvious candidate for Office Residential zoning. And so, you know, to nobody's error, we believe that had perhaps more attention be given to that from the owner, much less the Planning Department staff, they would have zoned it O R under transform. We think it was a legitimate error, and we think the facts support the council rezoning just the property to the O R one designation. Under state law, as I think the council knows, you either have to find there's substantial change in the neighborhood since the last comprehensive zoning, or there was a mistake in the original assumptions by the council when the zoning was passed. In this case, we believe that people, had they realized that this was an actual office building, been in existence for thirty-five years, thirty-six years, that they would have given it O R zoning and qualifies as a mistake.
And that's for the record. Could you also just kind of explain, I know you had mentioned one of the findings also was population changes in the area, even though our 2020 census data has not been released. Can you just explain the change in that Locust Point neighborhood?
Well, the changes in Locust Point began certainly well before the 2020 census with some significant developments, Silo Point being probably the most significant, and then going into McHenry Row, and Locust Point redevelopment continues. Industrial buildings are being replaced with townhouses. Industrial complexes are being converted to office and residential commercial uses. And the, I did not have the estimate of the, of the change from 2017 when transform was passed till today, but I can certainly provide that from data that maybe the Planning Department could provide.
Madam Chair.
You're fine. I just want to remind, remind you that, you know, the finding of the facts, we have to have that oral presentation, so I just wanted to make sure that what you gave the committee, we need to hear that orally as well.
Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to supplement what Al said, probably about 260 or 270 market rate units at Anthem House at 900 East Ford Avenue, an additional 60 market rate units at Anthem House Two, directly across the street west of that site on the other side of Lawrence Street, all to forty-seven, forty-seven individual row homes, other HOAs that came online shortly before Keys Overlook, towns at Locust Point and then McHenry Point, in addition to McHenry Row, as Al referenced, McHenry Row Phase Two, which is probably another 200-plus residential units. So that neighborhood, Census Track twenty-four dash zero five, has seen explosive residential growth over the, over the past several years, including after transform in 2016 was enacted. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And also, yeah, you mentioned about the transportation. I, the circulator does go over to that area. Is there more, are there more transportation efforts in the future for that area?
There's a, there's a circulator banner route, which goes, goes down Ford Avenue and then on Key Highway. In addition, there's an MTA route. I want to say it's line sixty-four or sixty-two, if I'm not mistaken. And in addition to that, there is water transportation with both the Harbor Connector, which is run by the circulator system, as well as private sector side of the water taxi. And Liam from DOT, I'm sure can supplement anything I shared on that front.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know if this project or whatever is planned for this property qualifies, but certain projects, buildings over a certain square footage or a certain amount of units within this part of the city are within our traffic mitigation zones, so developers have to contribute into a fund.
Well, this is, Madam Chair, if I may, this wouldn't qualify, this wouldn't qualify, Liam, for, for traffic mitigation impact fees, just because it's, it's a rezoning to, to correct a non-conforming use, so there's no construction planned here.
Sure. Yeah, I think just in the broader context of the conversation of a lot of development happening, that, that is like a unique tool in our toolbox. But yeah, I stand with what the Councilman just said. I think, I don't believe that applies directly here.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee before I go back to the Law Department to see if Al Berry's testimony was good for legal sufficiency? Any, any questions on this project or bill from council members? Hearing none. Victor, was there any more questions that you needed Al to clarify, or is this approved for, what he mentioned is approved for legal sufficiency?
Yeah, I mean, it's the best practice, the kind of conversation we just had, discussion we just had is the best practice, and the oral representation of the facts is another best practice. Ultimately, what you need to have in the record is what Mr. Berry has supplied, and so you're good to go.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate that and appreciate, thank you, Al, for the explanation, and Councilman Costello, the oral presentation is, is important for these zoning matters. And moving forward, where the committee will now take public testimony, and we'll start with the raise, any raised hands? And I don't see any raised hands, but I do want to mention this for the remainder of our entire hearing. Computer, computer users, please use the raise hand function if you wish to testify. When called upon, please state your name before testifying. Attendees who call in by phone will be unmuted one by one. Callers will hear two beeps when unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. If you do wish to testify, please state your name. And again, we have no hands raised, and are there, Jennifer, are there any callers?
Go follow one of them.
Jessica Goodman? Hello, would you like to testify? Michael Fishman?
I do not wish to testify.
Bible Mannequin?
I do not wish, I do not wish to testify.
Thank you. Okay, that's it with public testimony. The committee heard testimony regarding the bill. Is there a motion to approve the finding of the facts?
So moved.
So moved by Conway. Do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes.
Yes.
Stokes is a yes. We have no amendments, as mentioned earlier. Is, is there a motion to move the bill with amendments?
So moved with amendments.
Second from Councilman Stokes.
No amendments, I'm sorry.
No amendments.
I'm sorry. Who moved the bill?
Conway.
Conway, second.
Councilman Stokes.
Councilman Stokes, this bill moves favorable. Middleton, yes. Bullock? Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, and Stokes?
Yes.
This bill moves favorable and will be heard at second reader at the next council meeting. Thank you. Moving on to the second, Bill Number twenty-one dash zero zero five five, zoning conditional use retail goods establishment with alcohol beverages sales, 2600 North Howard Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverages sales on the property known as 2600 North Howard Street and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on March 22nd, 2021. The spot, the bill was sponsored by Councilman Stokes. Do the committee, does the committee have any questions at this point? Hearing none. Councilman Stokes, did you have a question?
No, I do not.
Okay. Did you want to speak?
No, I do not.
Okay. The committee will now hear from agency representatives, and we'll, again, we'll start with the Planning Commission, which gave a favorable report with an amendment. And we have Martin French, you're going to do this. Mr. French, please explain for the committee the findings and, you know, the recommended amendments, as were for the oral report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And members of the committee. At its regular meeting on May 13th of this year, the Planning Commission considered City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero five five to permit with certain conditions, establishment, maintenance, and operation of a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales on the property known as 2600 North Howard Street. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this bill following presentation of the staff report. The Planning Commission adopted the staff report, and the staff report recommended amendment of this bill specifically because the property, entire property of 2600 North Howard Street is large, and the proposal was not to use the entire property for a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales. Therefore, to reflect better the intent of the sponsor and the owner of the property, as well as the consideration of the community, the department recommended and the Planning Commission recommends approval of these specific amendments. Insert a portion of immediately before 2600 North Howard Street in the bill title. Revised legislative purpose statement to read in part on a portion of the property known as 2600 North Howard Street, as shown in yellow on the accompanying floor plan in lieu of plat. In Section One, revise the third line to read in part on a portion of the property known as 2600 North Howard Street in an area not to exceed 700 square feet of floor area, as shown in yellow on the floor plan accompanying this ordinance, and replace the site plan dated March 4th, 2021, and use in lieu of the plat referred to in the bill with a floor plan dated May 6th, 2021, showing proposed retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales, area equals 696 square feet, proposed floor plan. In order to approve this particular conditional use, the Planning Commission made findings specifically. This property was previously used as a restaurant and a retail goods establishment with no alcoholic beverage sales. The petitioner was seeking to expand the scope of retailing on the premises by adding sale of alcoholic beverages to an existing array of goods for sale in the established retail area of the existing structure. The balance of the property was used for and is intended to continue to be used for a restaurant, and therefore there was no intention on the part of the owner of the property or the bill sponsor to designate the entirety of 2600 North Howard Street to be a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales. The department recommended and the Planning Commission found that establishment location, maintenance, and operation of retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales on a portion of the property known as 2600 North Howard Street would not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare. Proposed use is not precluded by any other law, and there is no urban renewal plan covering the subject property. Use of a limited portion of the property for a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales would not be contrary to the public interest, and the authorization would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code. More specifically, with regard to the required considerations for approval of a conditional use contained in Article 32, the zoning code. The staff found a recommended finding, and the Planning Commission found that the site, including its size and shape, is appropriate for the proposed use. There would be no change to traffic patterns if this use would be authorized. The surrounding area is one in which the predominant residential type was originally single-family owner occupancy row houses, as well as some residential mixed-use corner stores, while the predominant commercial type is scattered structures and serves primarily various sections of the Remington community. For this reason, it is unlikely that the proposed use would impair present or future development of the Remington or Charles Village communities. There is reasonable proximity of dwellings and places of public gathering, reasonable distance from churches and schools. distance from churches and schools. There is adequate accessibility for emergency vehicles and light and air to the premises and to other properties in the vicinity. There are adequate utilities, roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities. Proposed use of a portion of the existing structure would not affect preservation of cultural and historic landmarks and structures. Approval of the proposed use would not affect the existing character of the neighborhood as the alcoholic beverage's sales license is to be transferred from a location two blocks away in the same Remington community. While consistent with the city's comprehensive master plan, the proposed use is not prevented or limited by any urban renewal plan. Converting a retail goods establishment with no alcoholic beverage sales to a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales with no enlargement of the existing structure on the property or of the area within the existing structure that is to be used for retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales purposes would not be inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning code. Therefore, the planning commission is recommending approval of this bill with the amendment and also very specifically with adoption of the floor plan, which I will now attempt to put in front of the screen for you to see. Get this right. The area designated in yellow, which I believe you may also have a copy of, is the retail goods establishment area that currently exists and would be converted to use as a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales. Thank you. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Martin. That was a very detailed finding of the facts and more specifically, you really explained the concept of how, of why we're just approving a portion. And that's very important. I just want the committee to, just for future reference, this is a good example of how we're just approving a portion of an entire piece of development. And I know that in some past hearings, Councilman Dorsey, you had kind of raised questions about that. So I just want to, you know, just that whole idea of allowing only a certain portions of a structure, you know, to allow for something like this. So thank you, Martin, for really giving the explanation for both to the committee. Does any committee person? Does any committee person have a question before we move on to the other agencies? I just thought that this was, you know, a very good point to bring out. Hearing no questions, moving on to the board and municipal zoning appeals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Thumless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. BMZA stands by its report in deferring to the report and recommendation of the planning commission.
Thank you, Nina. Transportation, Liam? He's not on. Nina, did you? It's no objection. I didn't know if you wanted to make the statement on that.
Madam Chair, I can, but it looks like Liam is backed down as a, an attendee, so he may just need to be elevated again.
Oh, okay, I see. Thanks.
All right, guys, I think I had a call in the middle of the hearing and it kicked me back off. So yeah, we stand by our report. This is Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. No objection. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Liam. And the city solicitor's office, Elena De Pedro?
That would be me, Madam Chair. It's Victor Vala.
Sorry.
That's okay. And you, the, there are no objections, no legal objections to the amendments that you have before you from the planning department and you have enough facts to lawfully rezone the property.
Thank you.
Additional use of the property.
Thanks. Housing and Community Development?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Cayman Bond, Mayor fellow, Department of Housing and Community Development. DHC has reviewed the bill and stands by our report in support of the amendment and passing of City Council Bill 21-0055.
Thank you. The Baltimore Development Corporation?
Raven Thompson for Baltimore Development Preparation. We stand by our report as favorable.
Thank you. And we also have the police on.
Madam Chair, this is Shannon Conway, Legislative Affairs Coordinator for BPD. We stand by our report and have no objection.
Thank you, Shannon. And the fire department?
Madam Chair, Nina Thumless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. A representative from the fire department was not available, but they do stand by the report and do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. And the parking authority of Baltimore City?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you. This is Christmas Age from the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our report, which is favorable.
Thank you. And the Board of Liquor Licenses Commissioners?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nicholas Blendy, Deputy Executive Secretary of the Baltimore City Board of Liquor License Commissioners. We stand by our report in that we do not have any objection and take no position, but I do want to note that the amendments offered by the planning, by Martin, are, and that were adopted by the planning commission are incredibly important because it is illegal to license the same premises with two separate alcoholic beverage licenses, but by creating the use that you're doing conditionally and limiting it to the floor plan, that won't happen because while the establish, but the property has a Class B Beer Water Liquor License ready to be issued that was approved before the board for the restaurant, it did leave out this footprint and assuming they get a use permit for this, if they were to apply and the board were to approve, they would be eligible to move the A license from B Willow, which I know is their intent, but other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you for stressing that footnote. Does the committee members have any questions? Okay, hearing done. The committee will now take public testimony. And I do see one hand raised and that's Caroline Hecker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg, Martin Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. People Manikin, who is the current licensee and the owner of this license, is also on the line as well. The purpose of this bill is to allow the, the transfer of the Class A license, as Mr. Blendy indicated, from B Willow at 220 West 27th Street to 2600 North Howard Street. It is, you know, within the same neighborhood, within a couple of blocks away, but now under transform Baltimore because retail goods establishments with alcoholic beverage sales are a conditional use subject to city council approval. That, that's the purpose for what, which we're here today. We do have no objection to the amendments proposed by the planning department. We, you know, our intent the entire time was to limit the retail sale of alcoholic beverages to this 700 square foot area. So we are perfectly comfortable with those amendments and we're happy to answer any questions that the committee may have. Oh, I'd also like to note that there should be a letter from the Greater Remington Improvement Association in support of this bill in your file. I had sent that over last week and I think you should have it.
Okay, yes, confirmed. Thank you. Any questions from the committee at this point? Okay, now we're going to go to callers. And we are checking now. Jeff Levy? Jeff Levy?
Now I'm waiting for the 11:03 hearing.
Thank you. Jessica Goodman?
It's me then.
Hello?
I want to see my hair.
Hello? Did you want to testify? If not, could you mute yourself, please? Michael Fisher?
I do not wish to testify. I do not wish to testify. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manikin, did you want to testify on this bill?
No, thank you. I do not wish to testify.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Okay, the committee has heard testimony regarding the bill. Is there a motion to approve the finding?
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Ramos. Yeah, quick question. The amendments are found in the planning committee, planning department's report. They're not separately drafted by DLR?
Yes, they are. They're in the packet. It's on the last page of the pack.
Of what Ms. Code sent us?
Yes. Last page.
All right, thank you.
Would you like her to send you a?
No, no, I, I found the email. I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're good? Okay. Any other questions before we move on to, for a motion to approve the finding of facts? Do I have a motion from the committee?
So moved.
So moved by Stokes.
Second Conway.
Second Conway. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Glover?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
So yes. There is an amendment recommended by the planning department to, is there a motion to move the amendment?
So moved.
So moved by Stokes.
Second Conway.
Conway, Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Glover?
Yes.
Yes, Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, and Stokes?
Yes.
And is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
Second.
Stokes moved and second by Conway. And this would be favorable as amended?
Councilwoman, I think that was second by Councilman Bullock. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you. Second by Bullock, favorable with amendments. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Glover?
Yes.
Yes, Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, and Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, this bill will move favorable at our next, second reader at our next council meeting. Now we're on Bill number 21-0063, rezoning 1201 Dundalk Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1201 Dundalk Avenue, block 6738, lot 036, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the R3 zoning district to the C2 zoning district. This bill was introduced on April 19, 2021, and the bill sponsor is Councilman Cohen. Councilman Cohen, do you have comments on this bill?
Not really, Madam Chair. I'm just going to be very brief. We believe this property was mistakenly rezoned during the transform process. This bill, really, we're just trying to bring the property zoning in line with its former zoning and current use, funeral home. And we just note that the president of the Graceland Park Improvement Association expressed no concerns with the rezoning and is supportive of the funeral home and correcting this zoning mistake. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the committee members have any questions to the sponsor? Hearing none, the committee will now hear from agency representatives and will again start with planning and please explain for the committee, any findings of the report. And I think we have Matt, Matt DeSantis?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Committee members, my name is Matt DeSantis with the planning department. So this bill was heard at the planning commission's May 13 hearing to reason the property from the R3 zoning district to the C2 zoning district. The planning commission concurred with, with the staff report recommending in favor of the bill and found, finding the, approving of the findings of facts, as well as a, the equity analysis included in the staff report, which is a, a new component for a planning department, staff reports for city legislation as required by the racial equity analysis ordinance. So before going into the, the findings of facts, just very briefly, as Councilmember Cohen pointed out, this, this pretty clearly appears to be a mistake in the current zoning. Before transform, the property was, had it had a commercial zoning district, a, a commercial zoning designation. It has operated as a funeral home since the 19, I believe, the 1990s. Back, back in 2012, very briefly, the funeral home acquired what is now its parking lot and it, it, it's, it rezoned the parking lot real estate to a commercial zoning district from a residential zoning district. So it, it appears that what happened is when, when trans, during the transform process, for some reason, the entirety of the site was mistakenly rezoned back to the residential zoning district. So going through the, the findings of facts, the, this proposed rezoning would not be in conflict to any of the goals contained in the comprehensive master plan for the city, nor would it be in conflict with either of the area master plans adopted for this part of the city. Rezoning to the C2 district would return this existing funeral home to a legally conforming status and better corresponds to the historic use of the property. The zoning change wouldn't have any, any direct impact on the Graceland Park neighborhood since this, this business has operated at this location for many years and proposes to simply continue operating. There have not been any, any significant population changes in the Graceland Park neighborhood in the interval between the adoption of the last comprehensive rezoning in the present time. The site's well-served by public services and utilities. There would be no positive or negative effect upon present or future transportation patterns in the area as a result of this rezoning bill. The proposed C2 district is compatible with the existing and proposed developments of the area along, along Dundalk Avenue as it would match the, the C2 zoning of abutting commercial use properties on the corridor. So existing uses of the property within the general area of the site are a mix of low-density residential, commercial uses. The proposed C2 zoning would be consistent with the abutting C2 zoning commercial properties along Dundalk Avenue. The current R3 zoning designation has, has actually made the current funeral, funeral home non-conforming to the zoning code. Funeral homes are not permitted in the R3 districts. So rezoning to the C2 district would be much more suitable for this particular property. There have not been any significant changes to the immediate area of the subject property since it was placed in this current classification. So again, planning, planning department staff put forward and the planning commission agreed that this, that the current R3 zoning, zoning classification was a mistake and that this, this rezoning bill would correct that mistake. I'm happy to also go over the, the equity impact assessment portion of the staff report if the chair would, would like, but those are the required city and state findings of fact for the rezoning itself.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions from the committee for the planning department? And Matt? Thank you, Matt, for that total explanation. And moving on to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals? Nina?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Thumless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. BMZA stands by its report in deferring to the planning commission.
Thank you. Transportation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. DOT stands by its bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. City Solicitor's Office?
Once again, good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Vic Turvila. You have the Planning Commission report, Planning Department's report, provides sufficient facts for you to lawfully rezone the property.
Thank you. Housing?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Cayman Bond and Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report in support of the bill.
Thank you. BDC, Baltimore Development Corporation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. BDC stands by its agency report in support of this bill. Thank you.
And your name for the record?
This is Luis Cardona with BDC.
Thank you. Does the committee members have any questions at this point? We'll now take public testimony. And we don't see any hands raised. So are there any callers checking for that now? Mr. Levy, did you want to testify on this bill?
No. No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manikin? Checking to see if you need to testify on this bill? Oh, okay, he's gone. Jessica Goodman? Michael Fishman? Okay, seems like there's no callers that needs to testify. Any committee members have any questions at this point? If not, we, is there a motion to prove the finding of facts?
So moved.
So moved by, oh, that's John. You, John, you and Mark, your voices are starting to sound alike.
That's my brothers, so it's all good.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second Conway.
Second, I think Ramos beat you to the punch. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Yes, Ramos?
Yes.
And Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no amendments to consider on this bill, so is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second?
Conway, second.
Conway. Favorable with amendments. Chair Middleton, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, this is favorable, no amendments on this one. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Is it yes? Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Glover?
Yes.
Yes, Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, and Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you, yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Now we're on Bill Number 21-0065, which is rezoning 1103 to 1109 North Washington Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1103 to 1109 North Washington Street, Block 1551, Lot 001, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat from the R8 zoning district to the IMU1 zoning district. This bill was introduced on April 19th, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilman Glover. Councilman Glover, would you like to share some comments on this bill?
Well, thank you, Madam President, Chair. This passed, this bill was passed, I'm sorry, this bill was passed last year and wasn't signed by the outgoing mayor. Mr. Jeff Leary was somewhat of a treasurer to Baltimore. He furnished like all the city councils, like furniture and things of the nature back in 1976, and also the mayor's ceremonial chambers. So we're just changing this over from a R8 to correcting it back to the IMU1. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions to Councilman Glover from committee members? Moving on, the committee will now hear from agency representatives and will start with the Planning Commission. And please remember to define, you know, make sure you explain the findings in your report and any recommended amendments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is Matt DeSantis with Baltimore City Planning Department. So this bill was heard most recently at the May 13th, 2021 commission hearing, and the commission voted unanimously in support of the rezoning bill. And as Councilman Glover pointed out, identical rezoning bill was initially submitted in the fall or summer of 2020, was heard by the Planning Commission at their September 11th, 2020 meeting, but for whatever reason, the bill was unsigned by the outgoing mayor. So I will give a brief overview of the findings of facts as listed in the staff reports. And before going into the findings, just very briefly, just to point out that a little bit of research in the property, the historic Sanborn fire insurance maps showed the building there as early as at least 1901. And the owner, Mr. Levy, he's related, that the building actually dates from 1875, and it's been in use for light industrial furniture making and upholstering for many, many decades. So it's rezoning to the R8 zoning districts during transform rendered that very long-established light industrial use non-conforming. There's a possibility that during transform, a, that there was some misanalysis and an assumption that the building was vacant, when that actually wasn't the case. Additionally, the current R8 zoning designation would make for any kind of adaptive reuse of the historic building, which is really beautiful by the way, very, very difficult. As such, the IMU1 zoning, which is proposed, is much more suitable. This is, this actually is a really great example of a property that IMU1 was kind of made for. It's a historic, old, industrial, beautiful building that IMU1 gives the flexibility to adaptively reuse in positive ways. So moving on through the findings of facts, the proposed rezoning would be consistent with the comprehensive master plan for the city, and it is not in conflict with any other area plans that it's part of town. A rezoning to IMU1 district would better correspond to the excellent use and historic structure on the property and would provide for additional uses that would be appropriate for the area. The zoning change would eliminate a non-conformity that was created during transform and would help ensure the preservation of the historic urban fabric that's important to the city's neighborhoods. While anecdotally, there've been a significant number of new residential, residential units and renovated homes in the Middle East, AKA Eagle Park neighborhood, over the past several years. We don't exactly have hard data on that yet, but there certainly has been lots of residential activity in the area. The site is well-served by public services and utilities and can support the continued use or redevelopment of the site. There will be no negative effect upon present or future transportation patterns as a result of the action of this bill. The proposed zoning district is compatible with the existing and proposed development for the area, as it will support the current light industrial use in the site and additional neighborhood appropriate uses, such as dwellings and retail. The existing uses of the property within the general area of the site are a mix of residential, institutional, and commercial. The IMU1 zoning districts would be compatible with the adjacent R8, R10, and I2 zoning designations. Additionally, there are excellent IMU1 zoning districts just to the east and south of the subject property. The current R8 zoning designation has made this long-existing light industrial use of the property non-conforming. It would also, it would also make redevelopment of the site that preserves the historic building much more challenging. These facts suggest that the current R8 zoning is not appropriate. There have been significant changes to the immediate area of the subject property since it was rezoned to R8 in 2016 that have added additional residents to the area. Additional residential and commercial development is currently proposed for this area. The IMU1 zoning designation is appropriate in that it attempts to blend buildings with historic industrial uses into contemporary residential. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions the committee might have. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt, for that detailed information. Any questions to Matt from committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to the BMZA. Nina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The BMZA was unable to attend this afternoon. Nina Thummles with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA stands by its report in deferring to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Transportation?
Well, Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. Agency stands by its bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. City Solicitor's Office?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietre for the Baltimore City Law Department. The Planning Commission and the Planning Department have agreed that this rezoning is necessary and have approved the bill, and the planning staff report provides sufficient findings to find a mistake in the underlying zoning.
Thank you. Housing?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Cayman Bond and Mayor O'Fellow, Department of Comprehensive and Community Development. We stand by our report in support of the passing of the bill as well. Thank you.
BDC?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Micah Fetz for the City of Baltimore Development Corporation. The BDC stands by its report. The report is favorable, and we support passage of the bill.
Thank you. And the Parking Authority? We're, oh, you're unmuted.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that, Madam Chair. Arco Sam from the Parking Authority, and we do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions? We'll now take public testimony. And there are no hands raised. And there are no callers that want to testify on this bill. But I'll check to make sure. Mr. Levy, did you want to testify on this bill?
I think Matt covered everything. I just want to say it's been continuously used as a commercial building since 1875. That's almost 150 years. And I'd appreciate the city just making it IMU, and we can keep on going with this great old building.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Manikin, did you want to speak on this bill? He's not there. Goodman? Jessica Goodman?
Thank you.
Did you want to testify on this bill?
No, ma'am, I would not like to testify on the bill.
Thank you. Mr. Fishman? No comment. So now, at this point, the committee heard that brief testimony on the bill. Is there a motion to move the finding of the facts?
So moved, Conway.
So moved by Conway, second? Second by Middleton. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Glover?
Yes.
Yes, Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, and Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready to move the bill. Do I have a motion? Moved by Conway, second?
Second.
Second by Ramos. Moving favorable. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes, Glover?
Yes, yes.
Is a yes? Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes? And Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes? This bill will move to second reader. Now we're on Bill Number 21-0042R. Approval for the exchange of a Class BD7 license for use at 3501 Boston Street, also known as 3831 Boston Street, to a Class A7 license for use at 3901 Boston Street, also known as 3975 Boston Street, for the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code to allow the license holder holding a valid Class BD7 beer, wine, and liquor license issued for use at 3501 Boston Street, also known as 3831 Boston Street, Baltimore, Maryland, 21224, to apply to the Class BD7 beer, wine, and liquor license for a Class A7 beer, wine, and liquor license for use at 3901 Boston Street, also known as 3975 Boston Street, Baltimore, Maryland, 21224. The bill was introduced on April 19th, 2021. The bill is sponsored by Councilmember Cohen. Councilmember Cohen, any comments?
Just very briefly, Madam Chair, thank you for hearing this bill. This is in support of a small local business in our district, Canton Crossing Wine and Spirits. They have support for this conversion from the Brewers Hill Neighborhood Association as well as the Canton Community Association, and we, of course, support it as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The committee will now hear from agency representatives. The City Solicitor's Office?
Good afternoon again, Elena DePietre for the City Solicitor's Office. The Law Department can approve the bill for formal legal sufficiency. It is the appropriate approval for this, under state law, for this exchange of license.
Thank you. And the Board of Liquor License Commissioners?
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair. For the record, Nicholas Blendy, Deputy Executive Secretary for the Board of Liquor License Commissioners of Baltimore City. We stand by our report and just note that all of the, all of the really, really specific use of addresses that is in this resolution is because this establishment has applied for and been approved by the board to transfer its physical location on that Canton Crossing property from one unit within it to the other unit. That reflects the change in addresses. But I think they're just waiting to get their final build-out and use and occupancy to complete the transfer, at which point they would then be able to give us a resolution if the board, if the council approves it, and they're BD7, and we would exchange it to an A7 license. I'm happy to answer any questions of the- I'm happy to answer any questions if the committee has any.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions? Hearing none. Department of Finance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pedro Ponte, Department of Finance. We have no objections to the resolution, and we stand by our report.
Thank you. Police Department?
I report, and we have no objections to this bill.
Thank you, Shannon. Transportation?
Chair Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
And the Health Department. Thank you, Liam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paul Nigro on behalf of the Baltimore City Health Department. We stand by our report of no objections. But I did want to just quickly note that in our report, we mentioned that it is a it's a facility that we regulate, and in fact, we do not, because it is just entirely a liquor-selling establishment that does not sell any sort of food items, so it doesn't qualify as a food service facility. So with that in mind, we, again, we have no objections.
Thank you for the footnote. The committee will now take public testimony, and I see Caroline Hecker's hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Caroline Hecker Rosenberg Martin Greenberg on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined by Michael Fishman, who's the operator of Canton Crossing Wine and Spirits. He's on the line as well. As has been indicated, this resolution will allow the conversion of their current BD7 license to a Class A7 license, which we're doing in connection with the relocation of the store within the shopping center, which is the subject of the next bill that the council has on its agenda this afternoon. So this resolution goes hand in hand with that conditional use authorization to allow the store to relocate to a new space within the shopping center. They've been a great operator, they've been very successful in the neighborhood. The community supports it. They'd like to stay in the shopping center and just relocate to a different space. And this will allow them the ability to convert the license to a Class A7 license, which is really more appropriate for the packaged goods store operation that they currently operate, rather than a BD7, which is what they currently have, which is really technically a tavern license. And they don't operate a tavern. It's a packaged goods store. So in any event, we're happy to answer any questions that the committee might have. And as I said, this resolution goes together with the bill that follows it to authorize the conditional use of the new space. So you'll hear from us again on that one as well.
Okay. Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
Will now take phone calls. Mr. Levy, did you want to speak on this bill? Hearing nothing. Ms. Okay, he's gone. Ms. Goodman, are you still there? Did you need to speak on this bill?
No, Madam Chair. I do not need to speak on the bill.
Thank you. Mr. Fishman? Did you need to speak on this bill?
Thank you. No.
Okay. I think we're now ready for a motion to move the bill. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos? Who was that, the second?
Glover.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Second? Moving favorable. Chair Middleton is a yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Glover? Yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. This bill will be moved to second reader at the next council meeting. And the next bill, which is our last bill, Number 21-0064, zoning conditional use retail goods establishment with alcohol beverages sales a portion of 3901 Boston Street, also known as 3975 Boston Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverages sales on the property known as 3901 Boston Street, also known as 3975 Boston Street, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on April 19th, 2021, and the bill sponsor is Councilman Cohen. Councilman Cohen, did you have any comments for this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Mr. Blendy and Ms. Hecker sort of beat me to the punch on this, but in essence, they are attempting to move. The Canton Crossing Wine and Spirits is moving. Within Canton Crossing, they will still be in the same center. As was mentioned previously, there is support among both the Brewers Hill Community Association and the Canton Community Association. And like all of our small local businesses, we want them to succeed. And so we are hoping to grant this ordinance so that they can move to a different part of the center and do their work over there.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions for the sponsor? Hearing none. Moving on to the agency representatives. And this also has some finding of the facts. So Planning Commission, please make sure you explain the finding of the facts. Thank you. Martin French?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. The Planning Commission met its regular meeting on May 13th of this year to consider City Council Bill 21-0064 to permit basically the relocation of an existing business, specifically here, the establishment with certain conditions of a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales on the property known as 3901 Boston Street, and more specifically, the portion known as 3975 Boston Street, as outlined in red on an accompanying plat. And the Planning Commission heard testimony in favor of this bill and recommends approval of the staff report and of the bill itself. I will go into the specific findings. By way of contrast with what we had to deal with with Council Bill 21-0055, note that the plat accompanying this bill was very specific as to the location of the premises that would be used for the proposed retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales, which therefore does not require any type of amendments to the bill. And the Planning Commission noted that fact. The site is a commercial site. It's also located in the Canton Industrial Area Urban Renewal Plan area. However, that plan designates this area as commercial, and this use is consistent with the urban renewal plan, as the Planning Commission found. This is a large retail commercial property that was constructed from 2018 to 2019. And the owner basically, as explained to you previously, moving this establishment from one portion of the property to another portion, and specifically towards the southeast, a little further away from the residential areas of Canton and Brewers Hill than currently exist. The Planning Commission reviewed the standards for a conditional use and noted that establishment location, maintenance, and operation of a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales at 3901 Boston Street, and specifically on the portion of the property known as 3975 Boston Street, would not be detrimental to or endanger public health, safety, or welfare. The proposed use is not precluded by any other law, including the urban renewal plan covering the subject property. Use of a limited portion of the property for a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales would not be contrary to the public interest. The authorization would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code. Planning Commission went further to the additional considerations required by the zoning code and found that the size and shape of the property and its building is appropriate for the proposed use. There would be no change to traffic patterns if this use would be authorized. The surrounding area is one in which predominant land use is retail commercial, serving the Canton community to its northwest and other more distant residential areas. For this reason, it is unlikely that the proposed use would impair present or future development of the Canton community or of the shopping district along this portion of Boston Street. There is no proximity to dwellings and places of public gathering and reasonable distance from churches and schools. There is adequate accessibility for emergency vehicles and of light and air to the premises and to other properties in the vicinity. There are adequate utilities, roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities. Proposed use of a portion of the existing modern commercial structure would not affect preservation of cultural and historic landmarks and structures. Approval of the proposed use would not affect the existing character of the neighborhood as the alcoholic beverage sales license is to be transferred from a similar commercial location two blocks away to the west. While not inconsistent with the city's comprehensive master plan, the proposed use is not prevented or limited by the Canton Industrial Area Urban Renewal Plan. Allowing a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales with no enlargement of the existing structure on the property or of the existing area within the structure that would be used for the purpose of a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverage sales would not be inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning code. Planning Commission also made specific equity findings, which are contained in this report. And that concludes my testimony. I would be happy to answer any questions any members of the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a matter of oral record, that we do have a copy of the Canton Community Association Economic Development Committee letter in our files. Does the committee have any questions to Mr. French? Hearing none. Next, we have the BMZA Board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Thumbless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA stands by its report in deferring to the report and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nina. Transportation? Liam?
Hello, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. And the City Solicitor's Office?
Elena DePietra for the City Law Department. The law department approves the bill for formal legal sufficiency. The Planning Department's findings were sufficient to satisfy the criteria in the law. And the Planning Commission also agreed with the Planning Department's report.
Thank you, Elena. And Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cayman Bond in Department of Housing and Community Development. PHCD stands by our report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. And BDC?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Luis Cardona again with Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our bill report in support of this bill.
Thank you. And any questions at this point from the committee? Now we're going to public testimony, and we'll start with one hand raised, and that's Caroline Hecker.
The applicant. Can you hear me? I think it's cut in.
Yes.
Sorry. Caroline Hecker Rosenberg Martin Greenberg on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined as well by Michael Fishman of Canton Crossing Wine and Spirits. He's on the phone. As I indicated before on the previous bill, this is, the purpose of this bill will allow Canton Crossing Wine and Spirits to relocate to a new location within the Canton Crossing Shopping Center. They've been very well supported by the local community association over the time that they've been there. I will note that the original, their original location was established under the Canton Crossing Planned Unit Development that was in place at the time the shopping center was originally developed. It was repealed after Transform Baltimore became effective because it wasn't necessary anymore, except that under the new zoning under Transform Baltimore, this type of use became conditional subject to city council approval, which is what brings us here today. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and Mr. Fishman as well is on the phone. So let us know.
Thank you. Mr. Fishman, do you have anything you want to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And then I'll just check with Ms. Goodman. Did you need to speak on this bill?
No, Madam Chair. I do not oppose or have any questions for the bill.
Thank you. And I think that covers it. So if the committee members do not have any questions, we heard the testimony regarding this bill. Is there a motion to approve the finding of facts?
So moved.
So moved. Bullock, and second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Dorsey?
Can I use the bathroom?
Yes.
Someone mute yourself, please. Thank you. Dorsey, yes.
For the record, I was responding to that person, but I'm also voting against the bill.
For the record, thank you for the vote for the finding of the facts, which was a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes is a yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm glad I'm last. I get to say yes or no, but it is a yes.
Thank you for the yes. No amendments. So is there a motion to move this bill?
So moved, Conway.
So moved, Conway. Second Ramos. Moving favorable. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Thank you. Yes.
Is a yes. And I want to thank you all for attending. And we've gotten through six bills in this committee. And you all have a good rest of the day, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a great afternoon.